PM, would you please rise for the pledge to the flag?
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call to order this meeting at the town council. The first item of business is two presentations. The first of the presentations will be delivered by Rosie Warburton, who will speak to us about a new composting opportunity offered in town in the business that she operates entitled Black Earth Compost.
Can everyone hear me? Okay. Hi, my name is Rosie. I am working with Black Earth Compost. We are a collection and processing company out of Massachusetts. We have three commercial compost sites in Framingham, Groton, and our most recent state-of-the-art facility in Manchester. So we've been collecting from residents and commercial facilities for the past 14 years, bringing it back and processing it into a high-quality compost. Recently, over the years, especially in Massachusetts, you know, with landfills closing, people are looking for ways to divert waste away from landfills. I imagine here in Little Compton, you guys probably do a lot of that in your yards and on your own land, but this is a great option for people that don't have that or don't like the mess of backyard composting. So we provide either a four- or 13-gallon bin to residents, and we offer an every-other-week program right now in Little Compton. We had a big push from residents, and then we also worked with the Tiverton Litter Committee. I don't know if you guys are familiar with them at all, but we had a lot of people reach out to us in the past few months that really wanted to start this. So we have a route starting in Little Compton on January 12th, and it'll be a select area right now, just because we don't have the density of customers that we need yet. But we encourage people that are interested to pre-register on our site, and that's free. And then when you sign up, you'll be able to put in your address and see if our service is available for you. We also will be collecting from the Wilbur and McMahon School starting in January, and they will be, I believe, using, I don't know if you've heard of Clean Ocean Access, but their Clean Ocean Access is, they provide a great educational and implementation program. So they will be going into the Wilbur and McMahon School in addition to our services to introduce composting to the kids in the schools. And I think that's all I have. If you guys have any questions for me.
I have a question for you. Should we participate as a town collectively? Do we earn the offset in diversion that occurs as a result of that waste going somewhere other than the landfill? Or is that something that you deal with?
Yeah, so I don't, I mean, I'm assuming most of your waste right now is either going to Johnston, the processor up in Johnston.
Via our transfer station, yes.
Yes, yeah. So another option, I was meant to mention this, for people that don't do the curbside service, another option would be to have our 64-gallon compost bins at the transfer station as more of a drop-off centralized location. So that is another option. Does that answer your question?
It does. I'm just thinking of next steps. Do you have such a relationship with the town of Tiverton? Do they have, are they participating as a town in your effort?
Yes. The town, no. It's been much, it's been more of a residential push. We don't require any contracts with the town or anything. We're just private haulers. So residents just sign up with us directly, and we manage, you know, the bins, liners for the bin, all the customer service for it as well.
And what would you need from us in response to your presentation?
Yeah, I mean, if the town is interested in helping to promote this service, or if you would like to help us, or help the town to get bins set up at the transfer station and help fund that, that could be an opportunity as well. Yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
Are there any municipalities that have your bins at their transfer station or dump?
We used to in Portsmouth, Rhode Island, kind of, this is kind of a new kind of thing for Rhode Island. Massachusetts, we have 40,000 residents signed up, and hundreds of towns have our bins at their transfer stations, yeah. I will say, they also have a lot better funding and some policy in place to back that up, but Rhode Island's, hopefully, will get there soon. Yeah.
Any other questions here?
Just if pound, let's just use pounds. If we recycle a pound, does that pound come off our rate of tonnage going to central landfill?
I think you're asking for the wrong question.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
She's not the entity to answer that, but I can get the answer to that.
Yeah, I mean, we estimate, yeah, and we estimate about each household probably will divert 10 to 12 pounds a week of food waste. So that's kind of the metric that we use per household.
Are there any public questions about this process? All right. Well, thank you. We will, we will ask the administrator and the clerk to make the connections that we need to within the state to find out what advantage it would be to us, and then come back to the public with an encouragement to participate as may be obvious from the results.
Yeah, that sounds great. Thank you, guys. Thanks.
The next presentation is one given by Amy Mooney and Ed Burnett, and they're going to brief us on the Little Compton Business Owners Network.
Hello, everyone. It's nice to be back in the chambers here. Good work. On behalf of Ed Burnett, who can't be here, I apologize. He's actually next door at the community center, working at our Christmas party, ironically. We wanted to announce the Little Compton Business Owners Networking Group. The purpose of the group is to facilitate the development of relationships among small business owners and professionals located in and/or servicing Little Compton. By building stronger connections among business owners, we expect to better understand the work of local businesses, to learn from each other's successes and best practices, to share both the challenges we face and the solutions we have found, to create opportunities for collaboration, to create opportunities for referral, and to create a network of resources that will provide better service to our customers and our clients. Collectively, we strive to help each other be more efficient, overcome challenges, and ultimately provide a stronger product. Our targeted outcomes at the community center are to provide an annual job fair to support hiring. I know none of us are strangers to the fact that hiring is an immense challenge in our community here, which has deeper roots and other issues, which we're also familiar with, and we might speak about tonight. So at the community center, we're aiming for a spring, late spring job fair to help contribute to our local small businesses. Other outcomes are facilitating the sharing of tangible and intangible resources, including equipment and know-how, a shared referral network, and other initiatives developed with the ideas and needs of the group. Opportunities to collaborate are through Zoom and our virtual to start, to just make it easier and low-barrier to participate. Our qualifications to join are that you must service or be located in Little Compton, must be committed to fair and ethical business practices, prompt and professional responses to clients referred to by members of the group, and recognition that their actions reflect on themselves and others in the group. Our first networking meeting will be held virtually on January 11th at 8:30 a.m. For more invitation, for more information or invitation for that meeting, please reach out to me at the community center. Any questions from anyone in the room?
Thank you. Any questions on the council? In the public, I see no one. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is announcements, and the community center has requested that we remind residents to review the many events scheduled throughout the weeks ahead. Not surprisingly, those weeks ahead start after the first of the year in terms of events there, but there's a full slate of events in January, and obviously ongoing haircuts, computer help, after-school registration, enrollment, et cetera. So we look forward to those things, and their website, that is the community center's website, has all of the details respecting that. Are there other announcements that need to be made? Yes?
The, Your Honor, Board Body, you had requested that Chief Rains and I follow up on the Town Landing reserving parking spots for town residents. So I did do that, and it was a late response, so unfortunately was not able to get into the agenda. But I did get a response in a very clear state that we, that is not something that would be allowed to reserve parking spots for residents.
Okay. That was the question. Was that understood by everyone? That reserving parking spots at Town Landing would not be supported by the state because of the fact that we received funding from the state for the renewal of the Town Landing. Now, the item is not on the agenda for deliberation and discussion and action, but we will be ready to do that at a future discussion.
Correct.
Future meeting. Thank you. Are there any other announcements? Next item of business is approval of the minutes of December 7.
Motion to approve the minutes as written unless someone has a change.
Second.
Motion made in second. It is a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. The next item is Department Head Reports, first that of the Building and Zoning Department.
Motion to place on file as written.
Second.
I'd like to pull a few of those out.
Go ahead.
The RIDOT Little Compton Commons Project, Tony, I'll just read it. I don't know if it's up there. It says they visit us, with us to walk through some items and clarify the expectation from both parties that we're returning to share with the council status of the project. Could you just clarify that for us?
Yes, they visited with us and took a walk through the commons, just to clarify the curbing, the crosswalk, the church there, there was one, there was some question. So they needed to give that and have some discussion with us.
Is there a meeting set up? Is there a date for them to come?
Not yet, because I will be sending that up.
Is there a timeline?
I would say by January, we should get them, yes. Then we should have a visit from Dan in January.
Okay, just for the, for the public, too. On this report, road paving program, Beta Group, which this council hired a few years ago, has begun the survey and do borings on various roads, John Dyer Road, John Sisson Town Way, and Terrell's Lane. Eventually, they will also before the town council to share their findings. Again, could you just expound on that?
They actually already in town, some of those, they have seen some markings and some of those roads to the state, yeah. And once they have enough work, you know, to be far back, they will do that.
Is the timeline on that also, is?
We certainly can make a point of getting back in January as well.
And one of the last things on here is your community senior needs assessment. I think that's also on the agenda, so we can talk about that. We could talk about that soon. Thanks.
Any further discussion or comment on the department head report of the administrator? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes?
The motion.
Right, yeah, that's what I thought.
Motion to place on file the town administrator report as written.
The motion has been made and seconded following the discussion to place on file the report of the town administrator. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next item of business is old business. It is review and consider alterations to the actions taken at the December 7th Town Council meeting relative to changes in the zoning ordinance. I'm going to ask Counselor Mataronis to speak on this. Let me set the table by saying what we did was, at the December 7th meeting, in an effort to respond to what was described to us as an urgent need to have in place zoning ordinances which were consistent with state law, we took, we recommended, the public commented upon, we went through the process of, and then changed our town ordinances in order to do some things which this evening, a number of you have written to us saying we would like to review, like to hear more about that. We have a report to make on that, and I'll ask Counselor Mataronis to make that report.
So I spent a lot of time talking to Senator Palmer about the ADU legislation from 2022 and 2023. 2022 was passed by both the Senate and the House. 2023 was passed by the House, but not the Senate, and that was the one that had the ADU stipulations in it. So after speaking with Senator Palmer, I did speak with our solicitor and asked him to come up with proposed language that would probably mirror what the state wanted us to have, and also include what the planning board wanted in here. And then also, I took what was classified as a short-term rental, prohibited in accessory dwelling units, right from the state website, one that didn't pass, and why it didn't pass, I'm not sure, but it's going to be coming up in the January legislature again. So some of the changes were, the accessory dwelling unit shall be designed for year-round occupancy. The accessory dwelling unit shall be provided with a safe and adequate water supply as defined in the subdivision regulations, and an onsite wastewater treatment system approved by the RIDEM. The accessory dwelling unit shall also have adequate protections for stormwater runoff as necessary, excuse me. All such accessory dwelling units shall be required to obtain a building permit and certificate of occupancy, whether or not any construction is required. And then what I gave to the solicitor that came from the state dealing with short-term rentals was short-term residential rentals are prohibited in accessory dwelling units. For purposes of this section, short-term residential rentals means the use of any accessory dwelling unit for occupancy for less than a 30 consecutive day term of tenancy, whether on a short-term or long-term basis, including any occupancy by an employee or guest of a business entity for less than 30 days, 30 consecutive days where payment for the accessory dwelling unit is contracted or paid for the business by the business entity. So the way it's set up right now, I'm anticipating this is going to flow right along with what the state's going to come into or in with. So I'm going to make a motion, and I hope it gets seconded, and then we'll open it up for discussion, because it's a process we have to go through. This has to go back to the planning board, and then has come public hearing again. So I move, we send this proposed ADU ordinance to the planning board for their comments, and advertise for public hearing to be held on February 20, February 22nd, 2024, for a vote and discussion.
Second that.
The motion is made and seconded. I'm wondering if we're not able to display this above us, if we've got copies of the, of what Counselor Mataronis.
I'd be willing to go over it with any questions. Like I say, this can't be voted on tonight. It's got to go to the planning board, then come back for public hearing. So if you want to speak on it, I would ask you to be, any comments on it that you would like to see corrected, that it would be possible to keep it like we think the state legislation is going to be, that would be fine, but you're also going to have to probably be yourself at the public hearing. So like I say, we're not going to vote on this tonight.
Go ahead.
May I ask a question? So I guess this is more for the solicitor. As it's written here, if we were to take this to a public hearing and pass it today, before the state passes any further legislation about ADUs and short-term rentals, would this be legal under the current regulations? Or are we, are we kind of hedging that they're going to make changes to the, to the legislation?
I think what Councilman Mataronis said was spot-on. Most of these, if not all of the changes that he talked about are already articulated in Rhode Island General Law 4263.1-14 and, oh, I'm sorry, that's the one, 452473, which essentially outlines the requirements that the state would put forward if a municipality chooses to permit ADUs. So I think the language that was drafted by the solicitor mirrors exactly what is listed in the statute. So I know there was some confusion because of the changes in 2022, and then there were additional changes in 23, which, as Councilman said, were passed by the House, but then not by the Senate. We have had extensive conversations with Senator DePalma. Those changes that didn't go through are going to be back before the legislature in January. There's an expectation that they'll be passed. Obviously, that's no guarantee with that. So I think that what we have here would be in compliance with what the current state law changes that were put in place in 2022. If I could ask, the language in here on the short-term rentals, do you think it should be this, in this ordinance, or it should be separate in a short-term rental ordinance? And would there be more litigation if it was in a short-term rental ordinance by itself or included in here? I think you're asking me to speculate a little bit on that one. I think, you know, is the short-term rental, I mean, is that potentially challengeable, of course? Do we think that, we hope it would, that something like that would stand up? I think the, the position of the legislation has been that the reason why short-term rentals were exempted in the ADUs was because the meaning behind this is for affordable housing. So if by short-term rentals, by their nature, are generally not geared toward affordable housing, it's more as an investment-type thing by the homeowner. So the nexus or the genesis of this legislation was affordable housing. So. Do you think that this board, this council should have, we should have draft our own short-term rental ordinance, coupled with what we, the language we have in this ordinance? I think it's delicate, because you have, there are some other state laws that discuss the short-term rentals, and the fact that you can't prohibit them in certain situations. There are, there are ways you can regulate them. I think if we're doing it in conjunction with this ADU ordinance, I think that that may give us a stronger legal standing as opposed to putting it out there, because there are some issues with the state that you can't prohibit the STRs, the short-term rental. So I think by the way that we've fashioned it this way, we feel is probably the best for the town as far as legal standing goes.
Agreed. I think that's, I think that's very important, that we don't further divide ourselves and say we have this target, and this target, and this target, and then have someone say that has this problem, and that has this problem. This is, what we're attempting to do is to respond to the public comment that says we would like accessory dwelling units to not be discontinued. And the best way to do that is not to blend in other, other facets of the, of the legislation. I can say that through the League of Cities and Towns, the board on which, of which I sit, I intend to make this case strongly there, that we need to continue the pressure on the General Assembly to not tell us how to do things, but rather to give us permission to do things, or to give us prohibitions against certain things. And not to say they haven't done that both ways, but this constitutes one in which we're told how we're to operate this town, and the problem is, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not effective for this town, because it ignores the fact that our water supply and our septic disposal is done parcel by parcel. It's not done in a centralized manner. And so those kinds of things are part of why we're trying to keep these issues segregated and pointed at our particular issue. We, I don't want to minimize the letter from Victoria Talbot, who has given us, the council reconsidered or reversed its decision to eliminate the accessory dwelling, accessory dwelling, dwelling unit section of the code. And I would ask, are there any other, are there any comments that you would like to make with respect to that? Yes, ma'am?
Bob, I'd just like to speak one more second. In the 2023 legislation that was approved by the House and not the Senate, it was very close in the Senate. They had one sentence in there that said, "Short-term residential rentals are prohibited in accessory dwelling units." And then it said, check out Section 12. So what they have for short-term rentals is tourist attraction, means any use of a residential unit for occupancy for less than a 30 consecutive day term of tenancy, or occupancy for less than 30 consecutive days of a residential unit leased or owned by a business entity, Airbnb, whether on a short-term or long-term basis, including any occupancy by employer, guests of a business entity for less than 30 consecutive days, or payment for the residential unit is contracted or paid by the business entity. So what I read that we have in here mirrors that we just changed a little bit more, so it would flow for Little Compton, so it would be specific to this. Counselor Moore has something about short-term rentals coming up. I don't want to muddy this up and say, okay, this is our short-term rental, our ADU ordinance, and then, oh, well, we could do that, because it doesn't say anything about short-term rentals. So this short-term rental specifically deals with accessory dwelling units. Short-term rentals, another thing. We did have public hearings on short-term rentals, but like I said, Andrew Hassem has it on the agenda, so we'll let him speak to short-term rentals as it pertains to the general of Little Compton.
Thanks.
That was just for clarification.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, Victoria.
Don't be sorry. Thanks for the clarification. Hello, I'm Victoria Talbot, Big Drum Road, Little Compton. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight, and to those of you who reached out to talk with me last week. Most importantly, thank you for bringing the ADU discussion back to your agenda tonight. In my recent letter to the Secconnet Times, I wrote on behalf of the Housing Affordability Working Group at the Congregational Church. I'm here tonight as a town resident, representing only myself. When I first came here 30 years ago, I was an out-of-towner. I fell in love with Little Compton and was fortunate to find an affordable rental in an ADU. My landlords were in their 80s and looking for someone that they could trust, who would keep an eye on the property and check in on them occasionally. I was able to provide them with that sense of security so that they could stay in their home, and they in turn rented to me at below-market rate. After a few years, I fell in love with a local guy, got married, raised kids, sent them to the Wilbur School, helped to grow our business, hired local people, and became an active member of our community. That affordable ADU gave me an entry point to a community I otherwise ADU gave me an entry point to a community I otherwise wouldn't have been able to afford to live in. Our town has predominantly only one type of housing, the single-family house. There are few exceptions, but by and large, that's what's available here. But that type of housing doesn't fit everyone, specifically some of our older residents and young adults. Our town isn't exceptional in this regard. Lack of diverse options or right-sized housing is an issue in many communities. With this in mind, the state passed its ADU legislation aimed at creating more and different types of housing options. And although the new law doesn't require ADUs to be deed-restricted affordable, it would allow for the creation of more rental properties, resulting in more affordable housing overall. I know the council doesn't like to have the state dictate our local regulations with a one-size-fits-all solution, but this resistance suggests that we know how to address the problem better than the state does. I'm not sure I agree. We've been talking about this issue for many years and have done almost nothing to improve our embarrassing lack of affordable housing. Little Compton's restrictive two-acre zoning and lack of housing options, other than the single-family home, have resulted in the lowest percentage of affordable housing units in the state. Rather than seeing ourselves as the exception, I believe the mandate is intended for towns exactly like ours. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Victoria. Are there other public comments? Again, I will emphasize that this is not your only opportunity to review and look at and criticize and change this. We're not voting on anything tonight with respect to this proposal, but I appreciate the diversity of perspectives, because that'll be important to our conversation. Yes, ma'am?
Can I just ask a question?
Please.
My name is Bonnie Finney. I live at 82 South Shore Road. I have a specific issue, but I think it can pertain to many other people, too. Affordability for me to stay in my home may require me to rent my home in the summertime, which I'm going to venture to do this year or next summer. I have no idea where I'm going. If I had an ADU on my property, I could afford to stay on my property for the entire year, still rent it out in the summer, but then I would have a place to live in the summertime. And then ideally, as time goes on, in an affordable way, if I could then even afford to rent out my home because I have six bedrooms and four bathrooms, rent that out to people in the summertime who are local workers, like people who are helping in the farms. So which would therefore support the community. So my question is, with the ADUs, would it be possible in a situation like mine, where I would simply be renting out my home, not the ADU, I would live in the ADU, but rent out my home in the summertime for financial reasons, but ideally in the long run, to help support the community in short-term, for local help in the summertime?
In the current ordinance, as it's written, you can already do that. You can, if you have an ADU...
I don't have, but I don't have three acres.
If you had one, if you put it...
There is, there is, there used to be. There was a home in the corner, there's a well there. I mean, I would like to think, yes, I could be able to get a tiny home and put it there.
It's just the way the current one we have now, if you have an ADU already, you can live in it and rent your house out. You can do that by right.
Right, but mine is not livable. It's got electricity, it's got running water, but it doesn't have plumbing, it doesn't, you know. So it used to. There was a house there until it was burned down in July of '74. My parents bought in October of '74. So I've got photographs to prove that, yes, in fact, there was a dwelling unit there, but it's gone. There's a little tiny, 100-square-foot place there. So...
Bonnie, right at the time, you wouldn't be allowed to do that, because it was voted to take that ADU ordinance out of our zoning ordinances.
At this moment.
So, right. So if this doesn't go through, you won't be able to do that.
Okay, that was, but if it does go through, if it does go through, then I could still rent my home and live myself in the ADU.
Steve? I believe that under the circumstances as you're portraying them, I don't see an issue with that.
Okay. All right, thank you. But I'm not alone. I mean, so what if other people did that? So in other words, they didn't do the short-term rental in the ADU, but then they rented out their home?
So you really were getting into speculation about...
Right.
...ordinance that may or may not go into effect. So I think, you know, it's, I think they're good issues that we should, we should talk about. You can bring them up to the council. I don't know that we would want to give a legal opinion on...
Right. I don't think we would want to not go there, but your point is that if we, if we created such an ordinance, it would be to your benefit, and your, and your supposition is that probably to others' benefit, if the reverse were true.
Right.
Since the qualifier is going to be whether the two, the two structures together are properly watered and the sewage is removed properly, without impact on adjacent properties, it would seem that, that there's not an inspector that goes around and says, which house, which of your two houses are you living in?
Are you living anyway?
So I don't, you know, I don't, that's not the purpose. The purpose of it is to establish a safe circumstance in which a property can sustain two living quarters.
And, well, and I think the point that the concern of everybody is so people can stay where they are.
Right.
Which I think is critical.
Right. I don't mean to suggest that's the goal, but that's the way to get there.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this?
Mr. President, just to clarify something, and it may come up in Councilman Moore's discussion, but a rental under the stat, from the statute, from the general laws, from 4263.114, that a short-term rental is something less than 30 days. So if you're renting for longer than 30 days, it wouldn't necessarily qualify as a short-term rental under the statute. So just to answer that question. That may be more appropriate if you have discussion.
Thanks.
You guys remember the motion you want me to read again?
I remember.
Okay.
The basic elements are refer it to the planning board and set up a, the proper chain to bring it back to the council's public hearing on the 23rd, 22nd of February.
Correct.
And that motion was seconded?
Yes.
Is there any further discussion? Yes, sir.
May I just ask a question for clarification? My name is Larry Anderson. I'm just remembering back to the previous meeting when you took action on this. Was the effect of that, and excuse me if this sounds like a dumb question, but was the, was the effect of that, is that at present, the council has repealed the accessory dwelling unit ordinance as it stands now?
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item of business, then. I should acknowledge also the receipt of a letter from Anya Rader-Walick on this issue, which is consistent with the conversation that we had, and I believe those are the things that we had before us that were germane to the ADU. The next item of business is a report and recommendation from the administrator for a community needs assessment consultant.
At the last council meeting, it was requested that we come back with a recommendation for a consultant, and we were able to do that. And the working group was, let me, just for the sake of everybody's information, was Linda Packham. She's a retired nurse and resident. Sue Sisson, Director of Social Service. Emmy Mooney, Little Compton Community Center, Executive Director. Peter Hurley, resident. President Bob Marchand, Counselor Galambowski, and myself. That was the working group. And we've met three times. And during those three times, we, the first time, we did brainstorm the presentations that were made before the council. Second time, we met was to generate a scope of work and identify consultants, which we were able to do that. We identified three of them. And third was to interview the three consultants. We were able to do that as well. The, as you have included in your packet, you have a very detailed recommendation to you from the consultant with the timeline of April 2024. The, the cost would be approximately $6,000 to $8,000, and the funds would come from the Opera Funds.
I'll make a motion to allow this county administrator to sign a contract with John Mattson.
Second.
The motion's made and seconded to engage John Mattson through contract by the administrator. Is there any discussion?
Up to an amount?
It's between $6,000 and $8,000.
Say up, up to $8,000.
I just go by what he wants.
I would recommend that. You know, give the cap of $8,000.
I'll add my motion to allow the contract to go up to $8,000.
I'll second that.
The motion then is amended to include a maximum cost of $8,000. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President, there is, the members of the group are here. I'm not sure if anybody else wishes to step up and make any further comments. I'm seeing...
They don't. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the work on that. We look forward to a product that gives us answers. The next item on the agenda is an update of the status of review of the use of crop cannons in Little Compton, continued from the October 19th meeting. Councilman Matarona.
I attended the Ag Trust meeting of December 6th. At that meeting, they were discussing certain things. There was a three parcels of property, farmland, that were going to be leased out. I asked them if they were going to lease it to somebody and then let them sublease it. They said they changed their activities so that doesn't happen unless, if the gentleman that first leases it has to come back, if he wants to sublease it to somebody else and get approval from the Ag Trust. I also asked them, do they know what they're going to, if you're going to lease it to somebody, did you ask them what they're going to put on that property? And I said, if it's something like corn or something like that, that's going to have crop cannons, to please try to move that property, let them lease some property that's not, that is, is so residential. I mean, whether, corn was growing up there on Windmill Hill. It was right next to a thickly settled residential area, and I think that's what caused the most problems. So I said, can you please work with the town on this? I said, it's not right to have one board do something that's going to be detrimental to another board. I said, you know, you've made these rules up, you've leased the property out, and there was a good crew of people there, the same amount of people that jolly comes to this, to the town council about the crop cannons. And I said, I've seen all these faces five, six times. So you need to not do something that's going to come down on the town council. I said, if you're going to do something, they should be coming back to you to talk about it. That's why I was there, to tell them not to do that. I also said, you know, you've got all this farmland, and it's great, and you keep saying, we've got all this farmland. That's fine. If you don't have farmers on that farmland, what good is it? I said, what you need to do, if you're going to be leasing it, is to give them some money for, like, the crop cannons or other apparatus to keep the birds off the corn. And there are quite a few out there. So they said that they were talking about that. I said, you know, you just said you had over $3 million in the kitty. I don't know why you can't give $15,000 or $25,000 out to some of these people that are suffering, because one of the questions is, the gentleman that had the crop cannons isn't financially viable, so he couldn't afford the crop cannons. So let's give him what they need to help them farm. I also said, you should start looking for property that has farmhouse on it, and get farmers in those houses. And I talked to one of the people on the Ag Trust before the meeting, and they said that they were, that was a concern, because they didn't know how they're going to do the upkeep. Well, I said, well, lease it to the farmer, let the farmer do the upkeep. If it doesn't work out, then you'll have to revisit it after a year. But you need to, not just buy property and let it sit there. You need to get farmers on it. There's no sense having farmland without farmers farming it. So that's about as far as it went. I am going to talk to, who's the guy from the EM that we...
The director?
No, not the director.
Ken Ayers.
Ken Ayers, and get his input on this. He was supposed to talk with Ian Walker and see what he had planned for the year. I still don't know who the Ag Trust is going to lease that property to on West Main Road. The problem was, they wouldn't let me know. They said they were going to lease it to Jason Packham, but they didn't know what he was going to grow on it. Hopefully, he grows potatoes on it, because I know they got to switch crops around. So that's, that's the report that I was asked to give.
Questions on that? Yes, sir?
Just a quick comment, and Mr. Matarona, thank you. Steve Mar.
Steve Mar from Seaspray Way. Thank you so much, Mr. Matarona. I was at the same trust meeting, and I agree. I think the trust has to make a decision. If they're going to lease land, you can't have a crop cannon going off 50 yards from residences. It just doesn't work out. So hopefully, they'll make a decision that, that is good for the community that we all live in. There is other land off of Old Main Road that I believe is private land. So I don't know if that will fall under the noise ordinance of the town, but just, just for me, you know, we've talked about the crop cannons, and you gentlemen asked me to get involved with it, and I'm still involved with it, and I just think it's, it was a good meeting. And I, again, appreciate Mr. Matarona's comments at that meeting, and hopefully the trust decides, we can't have bombs going off next to residences for, for two months. And hopefully, they make that decision and communicate to the, to the community and so forth. So, thank you.
So when those crop cannons were going off last year, I think what we could have done was stop them by noise ordinance. So I don't think the council wanted to do that. It was growing season. We don't want to inhibit the farmers from making money, because if that happens, then we won't have farmers. But if this gets to be a problem, and you try to talk with the people, and they don't want to listen, because they think the Right to Farm Act allows them to do everything, but the Right to Farm Act has in it that you can't create a nuisance, and that definitely was a nuisance. So I think if this happens again, then I think we have to get a little bit more stricter and let people know, you just can't do this, and just say, well, dummy knows it, the rest of the town about it. So... But I will be speaking with the DM, Lou DePalmer, also said he want help out and try to see if we can come up with different ways to deter birds eating the crops.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Kate.
Hi, Kate Almy, Old Main Road. First off, I think what Steve was referring to, the land off of Old Main Road being private, is the land that was just north of me, where they were. But private meaning, I think it's definitely protected, but it's a State of Rhode Island DEM farmland, which I was going to come down to town hall to look at the deed, because I thought it actually was at, when it was protected, it was a collaboration, like DEM. Because I never really remember them just doing something on their own. Sometimes the money comes from, like, DEM Land Trust. But anyway, that's what I believe Steve was referring to, not just private. It's definitely protected farmland. But if you look at the map, it says State of Rhode Island DEM. Maybe they just threw more money into it. I don't know, but that's where that stands.
Sometimes there is more than one buyer.
Right. Yeah. So, but that, and that is definitely the land just north of me when I... So, but that, and that is definitely the land just north of me, when I believe the council came up that day. The main reason I wanted to come up here to ask is, back on the town council meeting of October nineteenth, I had inquired whether there were minutes from the meeting that was held between a few of the council members and Senator DePalma and Ken Ayers. I guess there weren't minutes from it, but there's a report in the council minutes about it. My question is, is there gonna be a follow-up meeting? Because there is a reference to something coming up to follow up in December, and I don't know if you guys had planned to do a follow-up meeting. For instance, there's a reference to, like you said, Ayers was gonna speak to Mr. Walker about his blast per day, and then also pursuing grants for other deterrents, lasers, et cetera. And then Rebecca Brown, I guess, did not come to the meeting, and that she was gonna reach out to Ken Ayers specifically about the laser use. So I didn't know with those issues outstanding, how you were gonna get the information back on those, and if, or if you were gonna follow up with another workshop or meeting.
There was no meeting minutes.
That's okay.
Right. What you're reading is what Carol took.
Yeah, that's fine.
When I explained it. And as far as the December meeting, this is the December meeting where I'm giving the report back. I'm hoping probably in March, we can restart this process again with Ken Ayers. I don't have a problem getting a hold of him. I think he's the go-to guy to get this going. Like I said, Lou DePalmer said he'd be more than willing to help out on this. Believe me, I'm not gonna drop this.
Okay, because especially if there's gonna be money coming from the Ag Trust.
Right.
Like, let's just say the laser stays in play, that would be Dr. Brown.
Dr. Brown, a few years back, actually came to Little Compton.
Yep. I was.
And was gonna give out some lasers, okay?
And that's when Jim Lawson was involved, coming here from the DEM.
Correct. So Ian Walker didn't want anything to do with it.
Correct. They, he tried to set it up.
Right.
And they just didn't want to work with it.
Right. And Tyler Young got his own laser cannon on his own. Now, he did have a problem with his laser cannon, because I've been talking to him, where I guess the laser lights, obviously, they go over the top of, we'll say, corn, but they don't stop, okay? So he was saying, I get, he thought they were bothering somebody, so when he went out there, the wires were cut on his lasers, so. Nothing's gonna be a perfect solution.
Right.
But believe me, I'm gonna try to do the best I can to get a good solution, and if there's corn growing up there with crop cannons like that, we're gonna have to be a little bit more thoughtful this year.
Okay.
It's gonna, it's been a year, people know there's a problem.
I've been at this since 2014.
I know, I know, I know you have, so. And I'll find out if the RIDM owns the lot north of you, because that was the lot that had the cannons going off when Bob, Bob and I went up visiting.
Correct.
So I'll find out who owns that.
And Patrick.
And I'll, and I'll talk to Ken Ayers and say, you know, we had a problem there last year, you gotta restrict what they're doing there. So I think, I think somebody needs to grab the ball here, and fortunately or unfortunately for me, I decided to do it.
Well, thank you for doing it.
You know, so I'm not gonna drop the ball on it.
Okay.
I promise you. So I'll do whatever I can to try to leave this situation.
Well, especially my questions about the Ken Ayers and the DEM and Dr. Brown, if I have specific questions for them, to be like, say, if there isn't gonna be a workshop, but you're gonna be dealing with them, can I get those specific questions to you? I mean, I could always drop something in the, in an email to them, but this is pertinent to here.
Right.
Little Compton, our issues, well, up there on the, on the hill. What I had thought to do, if there was gonna be another meeting or workshop, is present them to you, but.
You can do that, so I can have them to, if you ask them, you can either send them to Carol.
Okay.
I think you and I have emailed back and forth, too, so.
Okay, that's it.
That would help me out, so I could say, well, this is a problem Ms. Almy's having right at the time.
Yep.
Can we resolve this, so?
Okay, thanks so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Have I completed that item?
You have, sir.
Very good.
Do you need a vote on that? No, no vote.
No. It's necessary. Okay, good. The next item is new business. Councilor McHugh has a request for information on accessory dwelling.
Thanks. This stole my thunder, someone had this before on the agenda, but, you know, just thinking about it real quickly, I'm optimistic for the future of, of Little Compton when it, you know, comes to affordability and accessibility. You know, you've got this town council talking about it, the Ag Trust talking about it, the Housing Authority talking about it, school talking about it, you have citizens emailing each other about it, you have citizens making a group, getting money together for it. You know, fifteen years ago, nobody was doing that, you know? So now we're here, you know, even ten years ago or five years ago, you know, when I was over at the school, I said, how are we gonna get more kids in this school? And one of the superintendents says, well, I can't have people make kids, I can't do it, you know? And, you know, so what are we gonna do? We're gonna be nantucket. And it was very apathetic, and, and right now, it's passionate. So I'm really hopeful for Little Compton. We're gonna dive into this ADU, and, you know, one size hopefully fits all here. And it's really important that all these people together and all these boards, that we work together, we support each other, because we're all in this together. And if we're gonna make a change here, now is the time to do it. So hopefully, with this passion that's going on right now, that I haven't seen for a long time, or it's just appearing now, I'm hopeful, so that's just what I want.
I'm hopeful by that statement that you're gonna vote yes on this legislation I proposed.
Well, I think we're always, we're all, we all knew we were gonna have an ADU.
Okay. Well, didn't seem like it at the last meeting.
No, well, you can't read minds, I guess.
No, I can't read minds.
Thank you. Councilor Ariarte Moore, a request to discuss short-term rentals.
Yeah, so I'm sort of in the same boat here. I, I requested to put this on the agenda as a follow-up from our last meeting. My interpretation of that meeting and the discussion that happened specifically with the solicitor and the council was that we wouldn't be able to put any regulations on ADUs pertaining to short-term rentals in the zoning ordinance. And it seems like we're trying to find a solution here with the hope that the General Assembly adopts the wording that was proposed at the last session. So I'm just, I'm concerned that if they choose not to do that this year, we might be back in the same situation at the end of the session, if that doesn't pass. So at that point, I think we'd have to turn towards a short-term rental ordinance so we can regulate it and, and go back to an ADU ordinance, but at this point, I'll withdraw my request to have this on here, but.
So at three o'clock this afternoon, after speaking with the solicitor, I again called up Senator DePalma, I sent him a copy of what we had proposed tonight. He said, let me look at and get back to you. He called me back a half an hour later, he says, this looks exactly like what they're gonna propose in the General Assembly. So he said, I said, well, can I, can we put that in as an ordinance? He said, yes, we could. He said he would recommend that, he didn't have any problem with us putting it in, that he would support what we're putting in, ever came up at the General Assembly. My attitude on this, I think we should put it in. If the state says that's, we'll use it, and if the state says, well, you gotta follow this, then I'm, and I asked Senator DePalma if he would take our language and bring it to a committee up there and let them see what they say. I don't think we just say, okay, oh, we did all this work for nothing. No. I think what we're gonna put in, in the ordinance, if it gets passed, is good enough for the, it should be good enough for the General Assembly. Like I said, I took a lot of language out of what they proposed to us. This is gonna come up in the January session, and he says likely it's gonna pass, so we should, we should be good to go, I hope.
Okay.
Thank you.
I also spoke with the solicitor today, you know, about the issue, and he suggests, if I understood him correctly, we need a short-term ordinance separate. That's why I asked that question. And I also asked him, and I was just curious of other towns, what they've done, did they repeal their ADUs like we did? And, and he called up the state, they didn't have the data for that, but he, he called up other solicitors in the state, and he couldn't find one town that repealed their ADUs, and he couldn't find one town that adopted either. So he said, they're all waiting and thinking, you know, let's see what happens. So I found that interesting, and I thought I'd add it.
Very good. Obviously, not the intended outcome, but certainly a possible outcome, and that's what we got, and that's why we're trying to continue to act, to respond to what the General Assembly does, or doesn't do.
Who knows? They may take up our legislation or our ordinance and say, let's run with theirs. Why are we gonna make the wheel over again?
Mr. President, just one comment, if I could, to follow up on Councilman McHugh. We did a poll today, just to follow up, Barrington, Bristol, Charleston, Hopkinton, Situate, South Kingston, Tiverton, Warren, West Greenwich have not made any adoptions yet, so we couldn't find any that had, so we did some research on this today, and I agree with Councilman McHugh, I think that people are taking a little bit of a wait-and-see attitude on this.
Very good. Anymore on that? Next item of business is a letter from Peter Bermudas requesting the council review the action of the Ag Trust trustee, A. Michael Steers, in signing a deed November seventh, and to take any appropriate measures. This is a matter that, for the first step, requires in interviewing for the purpose of correction, a person who is in the organization of the town to be examined in executive session. My intention will be that we schedule an executive session with Mr. Steers, with whom I have spoken, and who asked me if he needed to be here this evening, and I said he did not, but he is ready to be told when it is that this executive session would be held, and I'd like to do it as promptly as possible after the first of the year, and interview him, giving him, of course, the open, the Exit, the Open Meetings Act opportunity to convert a closed session into an open session. But that's what we, that's the manner in which a, such a discussion takes place. So I would, we could.
You gonna make a motion?
Go ahead.
You're gonna make one? I think I just made one.
That's not a motion, no. That's, that's an intention.
I'll make a motion to enter an executive session concerning Michael Steers.
On what date?
You wanna pick a date?
Yes.
I'm free. You wanna pick one?
Is it gonna be a council meeting, then?
I will pull, pull the council.
What, what was your intention with the motion? To name it right now?
Yeah.
Good. I propose, would suggest to you that you might choose the next council meeting.
Suggest the next council meeting for our executive session, Mrs. Steers, at six o'clock.
I'll second it.
So that would be January fourth, 2024, at six AM.
Obviously, again, under the Open Meetings Act, to the extent that we have an item that can be discussed in public immediately thereafter, we will do so. If we tell you we took no votes or we took no action, we'll tell you that in the open session as well, and then we'll proceed from that into the further ramifications of whatever we discover in that process.
And I'm just curious, what's the basis for doing this in executive session?
Because we're saying to a person, your performance has been found wanting.
Okay.
And therefore, the person has the, what's the proper word, the right?
It's at their option. They can either have it in a closed session or in, they can ask for it to be open.
Right.
But it's the employees has the choice to make on that.
We can't choose to make it in an open session. He can demand or ask that it be converted to an open session.
And under that, we're considering Mr. Steers to be an employee of the town?
Well, I, my recollection of the Open Meetings Act is it doesn't specify the title of the person, but.
I believe, in looking at that, that we were, looking at it twofold. Actually, it's under personnel. I don't know that it stipulates it has to be an employee of the town, and then the second piece is the possibility of litigation, so there may wanna, there may be some legal advice or strategy that may want to be discussed in that forum, and that's proper to be done in executive session.
Thank you.
Thanks. Did I take the vote? All in favor of the.
I get a second.
I second.
All in favor of the proposal to convene executive session prior to the next council meeting on the Fourth of January, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item of business is a consider approval of advertisement specifications for the townway roadway project.
Honorable counsel, again, this is, as you know, we've been, we did a.
Excuse me. My apologies.
No problem. No, I thought you were referring, wanted me to stop, okay? So the, as you're aware of, we received a grant to do work, the Stormwater on Townway, and it's been surveyed, we applied for a maintenance ascent from CRMC that was granted, and now we at the last phase, which is prepare an RFP for construction for the work to be done there. The engineer, Don Maderos, is here, and he certainly can elaborate a little bit more on that.
Don, do you, don't you mind speaking on this document? Some of the specifics.
So just by way of introduction, a follow-up on what Mr. Texera described, it's a, it's a drainage project for the lower end of Townway between Olive Lane and the bank of the Secanet River, so it's the last section at the bottom of Townway. We did a drainage, did a survey, did a drainage analysis and design, prepared a set of drawings and a permit to the CRMC for, for a maintenance ascent to do the work. CRMC, as Mr. Texera said, granted the permit, so now the next step is pretty much the beginning of the final chapter, which would be to put the RFP out to bid, and, and then proceed with the RFP bid review process, eventually go into construction, once a contractor is chosen. Rather than go through everything to, should we, should I just field questions on specific aspects?
I don't think you need to go through everything. Do you see any pitfalls in this, Don? What are the tough things that have to be done here?
I, I think the challenges there are, we only have the Townway right-of-way within which to work, because that's the town-owned land, there's private property, obviously, on either side. For those who aren't familiar with the area, the, the road is, is in, in more or less the center of the right-of-way, and there's two drainage ditches on either side. There's not much room between the edge of pavement and, and the occupation, if you will, particularly on one side. So there's, the challenges I see that could be, that could make the situation better would be to look at removing hedges and whatnot that, that are in the town right-of-way, that we, I basically, as an engineer, I had to design around those, so I had to make, make do with the space that we had available. And, and the reason I did it that way is I didn't want, on a plan submitted to a state agency for approval, I didn't want to put notations that would basically be making decisions for this body, such as something needs to be removed, or, you know, action should be taken that doesn't particularly directly relate to the work that I was doing. So challenges, yeah, there's, there's not a lot of room there. Could, could we, more room be, be made available there? Yes, yes, it could, but I, I think action. But I think action needs to be taken to do that. And so then that's, that's a decision, I think, for this board to look into and discuss and determine.
So we're, we're sitting here now to consider approval of advertising specifications. We're sitting here now not for an RFP, but to approve the specifications for the RFP?
Correct. Yes. I just want to get that clear.
And to also allow, right, to advertise the RFP.
And so I've got questions. There's, from constituents that there's not going to be any parking spaces made there. This is drainage.
It's drainage. So the area right now has town parking. We.
I guess additional was the word.
Additional? No, there was, there was no additional.
Okay.
In fact, as you may, as an aside, as you may know, we're losing one or two parking spaces due to one of the adjoining properties installing a driveway.
On the south side.
On the south side, that's correct.
And the monies for this is a resiliency grant, is that right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
I'm going to approve the specifications.
May I clarify? Not approving the specifications, they're advertising the RFP to be put out. Where's these specifications?
Yeah, but it doesn't say that.
That is what he's asking for. That's what they're trying to do with the RFP.
Okay, then I'll change my motion to advertise the RFP using these specifications. So that covers them both.
Perhaps an of should have been, consider approval of advertisement of specifications for Town Way was the intention.
And if I may, Councilor Golombeski, the RFP itself allows for modifications to the specifications resulting from contractor bid, contractor questions, clarification.
And onsite, onsite issues you run into when you're doing it.
Yeah, even before, it's even, even before the final bid is, is put out, there'll be a pre-bid conference where bidders will, will come and tour the site, get a presentation and, and ask questions. And we did this at the town landing, at that stage of the town landing project, and we found that the contractors had a lot of great questions, which, which were incorporated, at least by thought, and then some implemented into the final specifications that was then bid, presented to all the, made public to all the bidders so that they're all, at the end, all bidding on the same thing. But that, that's why we're not asking you to approve specifications, as Carol and Tony said, but we're asking you to allow the public bid process to commence.
Tony, this is going to be through a grant?
That's correct, through the municipal resiliency grant, which we have funds for.
From the infrastructure bank.
However, this is, is going to be incorporated with the paving of the entire road. So it will be a one-shot thing rather than, you know, partially.
So Town Way, when this is all said and done, we're going to, I don't want to say lose, but we're not going to be able to restrict any kind of parking or anything down there from anybody from the state?
Well, right now, it's very clear through the ascent from CRMC that you cannot limit the parking down here.
Okay. I'm upset, sir.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
If I, if I may, the word is not limited, but restrict.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks for the work on that.
Thank you, Don.
Next sitting is Board of Licensed Commissioners. We entertain a request from the community center for a Class F one-day retail beverage license for four consecutive trivia night events.
I'm going to.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Communications, a request from LC 350, that's the entity that is planning the observance of the 350th anniversary of town, for the council to submit on its behalf a stroke for the FY 25 warrant for funding in the amount of $15,000.
I'm going to put this in the budget, both of you discuss. Second?
I'm going to recuse.
We're building the budget. We're, we're taking things out of.
I'll make a motion to.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. The motion is made and seconded to approve the request for the council to put a stroke for $15,000. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry. Four votes in favor with one recusal. And then a request from the East Bay Community Action Program for support of a stroke in the warrant for funding in the FY 25 warrant. Administrator, do you have the figure for EB cap last year?
I'm surprised you didn't put it in here.
I think it.
No.
I think it's.
Yes. I'll make the motion to approve $750. I'll second it.
Motion is.
East Bay Community Action Program.
Thank you. The motion is made and seconded to approve the request for $750 in the FY 25 warrant for East Bay Community Action Program. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next is the payment of bills.
Motion to pay the bills.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There being no further business other than to wish the remaining people a Merry Christmas.
Thirty-second question, if I may.
Certainly.
Just to backtrack, with regards to Town Way, Monday's storm has made a complete mess out of that area. There was waves 30, 40 yards uptown way.
Uptown way.
Who, who, does the town own the beach area there? Or is it just, just where the road ends? Because there is debris, there's 200 yards of debris. I'm going to try and get together with some neighbors to say, can we try and clean some of this? There's lumber, there's all sorts of mess down there. The town came down and cleaned up the street, but the drainage issue now, all the drainage is coming down either side of the road and is turning into a big pond.
Right.
So I don't know if there's, if the town owns that beach area or what it is, but it's, it got beat up pretty, pretty bad. And I just thought I would mention that. I don't, I don't know if, if there's an option to.
The person with knowledge has left, but, but.
I'm sorry, I didn't raise my hand quick.
No, no, that's, that's all right. We can find that answer. I don't, repairing, I mean, rights of peoples next to water, I'm not an expert on, but that's what, your question about who owns the beach, there's, that's, that's in play. There is a 50-foot wide right-of-way, about 30 feet of which, or 25 feet of which is paved, which the town owns. You would look at it and say, that belongs to Mr. so-and-so and that belongs to Mr. so-and-so, but you would be incorrect. That, that is all town property.
Just a question.
So what we're trying to do with this proposed repair is to use all of that to gather water. It won't help the kind of storm we had that caused the problem.
And just as, as they make the plans to build that, understand that the water was, waves were crashing almost up to Oliver Lane.
Okay.
Close. I mean, there's stones, Mr. Renaun's home, who lives on the right-hand side. When you get, his, his house is full of stones all the way up to his porch because of the storm on Monday. So I don't know, it was, it's a mess. The town came down, I was talking to the guys, they did a great job cleaning up, but there's like four-by-fours on the beach, there's three or four lobster pots, Peter's oyster pots are on the beach. So I don't, I don't know who's in charge to clean up or if it's just us.
I'll make a motion that you add a committee.
I got to go.
I got to go. Clean that up outside.
There, there, there being no further business before the council, the meeting is adjourned.